Edition. All right. Right, I'll call to order at the Tanama Desert Planning Board Meeting for May eighth, twenty twenty four. Welcome aboard. All right, let's just make some introductions here and we'll dive right into it. I'm William Manley, I'm Chair. We've got Tracy Loftus Keller, Vice Chair. We've got Gail Marshall, Alan Kimberly, and new member Anne Dalton. And I think the first thing we should probably do is vote Anne on as a voting member today.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Congratulations. And greetings to everybody out there in Zoom world. I'm sure we know all the Zoom protocol by now. And if you are in Zoom world, just sign in on chat, please, and we'll get right into this. So second item on the agenda tonight, we've got minutes to prove. And the first question I have is for the quarry minutes, we need Meredith. How do you want to do that?
You're gonna have to do it on the twenty second, if you don't have it.
Yeah.
And that's actually been the minute of the findings and movements.
Does that complicate that?
It's already set for it. It starts at thirty day period the day you sign the decision.
Yes, we can do the minutes and the and the findings in the same area. Got it. And then and then we've got the minutes from the twenty fourth. That was one of us to use a update.
Tracy Keller, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
There you go. We're through minutes. Item three. Bear with me. So item three tonight, we're talking about section two. Absolutely go.
I don't think Tracy was that.
No, I was just thinking that I think you're right. It wasn't even there.
Oh, because I didn't think there was.
Mm hmm.
So there.
So I'll take that off that.
Alan, second that.
Yes, I second that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Train's just moving too fast down the tracks here. All right, back to item three. So item three, we're here for section two general provisions. Similar uses and what that talks about is that unspecified uses which are substantially the same as or having effects the same as. The use is listed in section three point four shall be treated the same as those listed uses. Similarity shall be determined by the planning board in strict compliance with the standards set forth in section six and with other pertinent provisions of this ordinance. Any use or activity not listed in section three point four shall be excluded unless the planning board in accordance with section three point four determines that it is similar to a specified use. And that's why we're here. So tonight we've got property owners that the songs may may now wildlife sanctuary. Agent is William Hellgren and Greg Johnston. Location is fifty seven Pretty Marsh Road, Mount Desert, tax map ten lot eighty six zoning as Shoreland Residential Three in Conservation. And as described above, we are here for a determination of use and was this one advertised?
Yes, it is the first topic here advertised in the Courier Gazette, Ellsworth, American Mount Desert Islander and the Republican Journal, all one item on Thursday, April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four.
Butters notified? No.
This is an informal determination of use.
Got it. All right, well, turn it over to you guys then.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Craig Johnson, Representative of Hampton. With me is Billy Hellgren, the Executive Director and various members of the board and community that may have some background on the on the on the use of the property that I may not have. These are roads will be applied for a foundation for a support building twenty twenty six by thirty two. And looking back, the firm files no real physical change of use in the property from when it changed from residential to what is now mainly conservation, education, and it was a similar use, but it didn't fit exactly in the ordinance. Under it's similar to soil water conservation. That's not all they do. It's very similar to wildlife management. That's all they do. They have educational programs. So before we could issue a permit based on the history file, there was no clear where this, then where that, decided it's better to come here. For that determination and then we could proceed with an accessory structure. Structure that was proposed is basically a latch downstairs. That's a workspace and workspace upstairs, an office to assist them in their their activities. Maybe Bill, if you wanted to give us a little bit of background, sort of the activities that happen there in sort of educational and wildlife related that in that foster discussion.
Yeah, this this parcel was the original part of the wildlife sanctuary created by Virginia Song Sanderson in nineteen eighty five and nineteen eighty six, she property came to the Bible one C three that was established with the purpose of conservation and education and wildlife habitat protection and management programs in on that parcel and in the environment around so upon. And so there's a lot of different programs that happen there for school groups. There are recreational trails that are on the property. We the sanctuary studies all the loons that nest on all the lakes of the island and so upon and and coordinates fish passage for alea. They come up from so much so's harbor to spawn and so upon and on to long pond. So we do a lot of different programs of wildlife and education as a focus. And a lot with school groups. And you see a lot, a lot of kids in Stoneville checking out the fish migration when it gets started, not quite yet. So that's some of the background we do and on that on that property there.
And simply the structure, again, they have clues for clearing path, they have records that need to be kept. And so that structure and how it squarely fit in the ordinance wasn't a perfect fit, considering how orders changes and time changes and records weren't perfectly clear, but that are coming here is a confirmation group, which is very similar to those, I think, with some discussion or interpretation of the board that that's what it is, we could continue on with our our goals.
So you're in you're in two zones there, the Shoreland Residential Three and the Conservation Zone is
Correct.
What what zone are you in specifically?
Specifically, the specifically, it's in the Shoreland Residential Three.
Yeah. Is where you're building?
That is also the Shoreland Residential Three.
Yeah.
And the goal for the accessory structures to have a support building to be able to work on to help support the mission in various ways.
And your structure is a small nonresidential facility or a structure for educational scientific or nature interpretation purposes?
It is. It is in support of all the organization. It's also an accessory structure for an allowed use. So there's there's two ways to look at it. We looked at it both ways. We had a use that was defined, whether it was a small nonresidential or an accessory structure to an allowed use, I think it fits both, but I did, I do have, just for, if you would first to know what this building looks like to put in context, I did bring something out just so you think, what is this building? How do you look at it? So it's a little small, but what you'll see is the the bottom there is a large large door, parking, a little door off the side that back both could be parked in and upstairs, just some workspace on the back of there and upstairs more workspace associated with running and helping raise the organization.
Yeah. Obviously, I have three of them. Everybody go on.
Yeah.
So in a nutshell, what do you want from us?
Well, I think the in our letter of view, basically, I think if if the term conservation, what all the organization is, isn't squarely in there, that it's similar to other defined uses. I think that helps clarify and and uses that then become accessory structures to those used, I think, gives a clear picture that, okay, we are conservation. There's many things involved with that, we've heard, both in education, some property, and so that our goal, that the use is similar to other uses as conservation in the ordinance.
I don't know about you guys, but I couldn't ever imagine you guys being designated as anything but conservation. With the familiarity of the organization, where you located and the programs you guys have and the the tenmanship you have of the of the pond. Need to add scale.
No, I don't. I don't. I I don't see a difficulty in figuring out that this is a property.
Seems seems funny. It's beautiful spot.
Yeah.
Been there many times. Thank you for.
Nobody who has a kid hasn't gotten fish on that. Yes.
Think so.
Yeah.
And.
Definitely.
Motion and
Every program, I would say, and maybe Kim, if there's anything in motion or what discussion, it's going to help foster where we go in here. We're open to your point of view, if there any needs to be added to what the board may think.
I mean, the board ultimately has to determine the use, similar to a use in the ordinance. I I sent this to you for guidance and for clarification as so I don't be used as for the property. So you guys just need to determine what the use is similar to and so that I can work from that use and with permits. Insurance.
Well, why wouldn't this be similar to the small nonresidential?
That's what I thought at least initially.
So I would move that we would recommend a designation of this as a use is similar to a permitted use, specifically a small nonresidential facilities or structures for educational, scientific, and nature interpretation purposes.
I second that.
Is that?
Do you?
Do it for me?
Yeah, I think it, I I think it does. I think part of our request to would be declared as related to use or future. I think that clarifies the building itself. I don't know if there's
The accessory structure?
Yeah, the accessory structure, that particular one goes to the use of property conservation, that structure we definitely welcomes. I think that's just perfect clarity on what we're here for, so.
So the motion for us is the use of the property and more specifically the structure.
That would be most.
The structure, this accessory to the
Yep.
in all of these. So I would then to add that I'm sorry. The 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 language of
Can I get you to sign in there?
Sorry. The language also on right underneath small nonresidential facilities or structures that 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 it would include structure, a structure accessory to allow usage.
Okay.
Uses.
And where are you reading that from?
I'm reading that page three point one, three twelve, and this is the new one that just and just handed us and it's
I think we should may have mentioned conservation.
Property and buildings.
You want to do so more conservation that?
The use of the property.
As conservation is similar to.
So that would be what's similar. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me try again. I move that we recommend that this be designated as a similar it essentially a conservation program, which is a use similar to small nonresidential facilities or structures for educational, scientific, and nature interpretation purposes, which would and would include a structure, the construction of structure accessory to these allowed uses. So. Do it for you.
Yeah, second that. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
You guys happy with that?
Sure.
Yeah. All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? There you go.
Thank you very much.
Greg, if you want, these guys back.
Yeah.
All right. Let's keep going. Item four, we have a couple of conditional use approval applications. And the first one is conditional use approval application oh oh one twenty twenty four. Owner is Seal Harbor Properties LLC, David Robert Feller, Jr., applicant is Mount Desert Land and Garden Preserve, agent is Noah Musson, the Musson Group. Location is eleven Stanley Brook Road, Seal Harbor, tax map for lot fifteen dash fifteen dash one.
Slot fifteen and fifteen.
Lots. Oh, one, five, dash, oh, one, five. And or does it say and?
It doesn't, but Kim is telling you. That's what it is. It's two lots, fifteen and fifteen one.
Correct.
Yes, man. And zone is Rural Woodland Three, purpose is section three point four, services three, storage maintenance building, temporary office space. We had a site inspection at three forty five and was just one advertised?
Yes, it was in the same publication. The Thursday, April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four publication of the Courier Gazette, Ellsworth, American Mount Desert Islander and the Republican Journal, classifieds, page five.
All right. Butters notified, Kimberly?
Sent that on April twenty fifth.
Great. All right, so let's see, Alan, perhaps you could describe our site inspection at three forty five today?
Well, despite the little little bit of rain that was coming down, it was land that has numerous piles on it. Just ready, ready for building.
Gail, would you like to add to that?
I'll add to that. This is a a a long established maintenance and work and storage facility, and that's indicated by outbuilding types of buildings. There's a large water storage tank. There's there's obvious there's piles of lumber, there's collection, various piles of raw materials to be used in the in the maintenance and the upkeep of the Land and Garden Preserve and other similar facilities.
Lots of gravel storage, different size from boulders down to small.
Tracy, Anne, anything to add to that? Any other observations?
It's covered by wooded area and trails up in the distance. Building will be on a slab and will stop being it'll be at that level.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
And it it will be a dark woodsy color and sort of blend in with everything, so it won't be a distraction to the people using the park paths.
Sounds good. Thank you. And Noel, I guess I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Noel Lawson, representing the applicant. I am also joined by Jesse Hartson from the Land and Garden Preserve and Teresa Ball from Men's Bears. Our text is on the Zoom. So we are here for a conditional use approval for a project at eleven Stanley Brook Road, as you mentioned, which, as Gail mentioned, has been used for many years as a storage and construction yard, gravel pit. And when last we met on this project, we had a question about whether or not this would be considered services three, I think, is the determination that we came down with for this project for detective activity. And the proposal before you is construction new storage building on the site, which will be used by the Land and Garden Preserve. As we discussed the last time we were here, because there will be some displaced employees from the Land and Garden Preserve at their Green Rock construction project, temporarily this building will also be used to house some staff. That's not the long term plan, but that's short term need, and that's part of what we're going to be doing. So I'm going to hit on a couple of highlights and then I'm probably going to turn it over to Teresa, to Teresa, who's going to talk much more eloquently about all the great things that we're doing out there. But as part of the project, we're going to be adding a septic system in the building. There's going to be a pool, storage and pump there, which our engineers are working on additional state level permitting and design that might be required. We've got in your application packets all the stormwater management design and analysis that our engineers have already worked on. The proposed lighting is minimal, and we've supplied some lighting information that complies with the dark sky requirements of the ordinance. Where the design is very respectful of the existing, I call it, the exterior buffering of the of the site from other areas. And we are working closely with the the Rockefeller family. A few other elements to tighten up some easel language that we need for this particular project, including and Teresa, I think, can talk about this a little bit better than me, but driving, moving from the overhead utilities that are on the current site plan to underground utilities, so I can help protect the electric lines, section. We're also the buildings have been designed to be compatible with the other structures out there, such as they are. And cited, you know, on the site to not be more different than what's there now, so the compatibility part of it. And we're also extending the drive to get to that site a little bit more, which will require a whole extension and some other things that we need to work on or that are going to be part of the construction, a little parking area. So I don't know, Tracy, you have any more that you want to add to that, but I'll turn it over you.
Great, thanks, Noel. So I do have a short presentation that I can flip through if it helps to go through visual, if I'm allowed to screen share. All right. Can you see it?
Yes, yes, you can.
Okay, great. So just to give you a tiny bit of context here, this is a simple building, but it's an important storage building for the Land and Garden Preserve. That's really going to enhance their maintenance operation for the garden. And so this is an aerial of the existing site that you saw today. We see some of the piles that were discussed. And this existing storage building and the water tank and all of that is to remain. So this shows the proposed area of work. We're really just kind of tucking it in sort of to the center of the site. This is an existing survey that shows all of the current conditions. Now we have our proposed site plan. There are some minor wetlands on the site, and we've been working with Roger Saint Armand to document those, and that will go through a DEP permit by rule, and all of that is sort of in process. And here's a little zoom in, and I'm just going to draw for you. We know mentioned the the utility changes. This drawing does depict overhead power here. But in reality, we're really going to look at burying the power from this point on into the site underneath the road. So that's something that we'll update in the drawings for the the filing supplemental. And we have drainage plan. All of these are in the submittal packet. More on drainage, so we've studied all of that with our engineers. And as Noel mentioned, it's a very minimal lighting. It will it will meet town requirements and also dark sky compliant requirements. And the landscape is really the most important thing for us with the landscape is to maintain these existing buffers between the the carriage road and the main road and the south border. So all of that will be maintained, and that's why this is cited where it is. And now a little bit about the building, so a lot about the site, but it is, as mentioned, it's final use of the storage building. And so it's a very simple layout with one bathroom. It is one story, but it is a tall story with some lost storage. And then we have oriented the roof in such a way to maximize the solar generation that's going to be taken from these solar panels on the roof, so they will be generating their own power at the site. And that's that. Um, the yeah, yeah, we discussed the siding is is going to be a nice bit of contextual brown color and the roof will be metal. That's the building.
There you go. All right, I'll open it up to any questions from the public. Going once. Twice. All right, I guess we'll close public comments and soldier on here. So thanks for that. And let me first ask if there's any conflict of interest on this application. No, none heard. And let's get into it. You know, I think first thing we probably should do too is find out if you guys feel the application is complete.
Yes. Uh, yes, Tracy Keller, I make a motion to find the application complete. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, and then oh, what would you guys say about maybe using the short form checklist? I would like to use the short form.
Second that.
Mm hmm. Right, all those in favor?
I.
I, short form checklist it is. And then I don't know why we still do this, but we have a motion to approve the application.
So moved.
And then we need a second.
Second.
Second. In order to start discussing.
Yeah, right. And then we press the pause button and then our review is within the context of the discussion of approval.
Yes.
So there you go. All right, so I've got the short form checklist in front of me and I've got the application. And let's roll through this, so right. We are in section six, standards for uses permits and approvals, section six A, general performance standards, and my personal favorite, six A one compatibility. So the application talks about that. It's seventeen hundred square foot storage maintenance building. You know, it's under service. You know, it's under Services Three, the visual impact, it's been cited be buffered from adjacent uses. Proximity to other structures, it's spatially compatible with the building on the property, and density of development. The project is compliant with overall density requirements well below the level fifteen percent, so see application. Erosion and sedimentation control. They note that it's shown on sheet C four in the attached site plan, so it's the application, six A three highway safety. Project will include extension to existing internal drive and includes onsite parking. You know, shown on exhibit three, so see application. Six A four impact on town services. It's the proposed building is not required town services for water or sewer. Not so, see application. Six A five land suitability. The project area is predominantly the Furman Colton Rock Outcrop Complex. Development and project has been designed to address any site limitations. You know, they reference us to exhibit seven, so see application, six A six lighting outdoor. We've got some middles on the lighting in exhibit six. Six A seven stormwater.
That's the application for writing.
Yes. The proposed project integrated stormwater management and the new ratings, see exhibit five, so see application, six A eight vegetation. And that the they said that vegetation removal is associated with permitted uses. See application, six A nine dust dunes, papers, rivers, and gases. And they'd say that the app and says that the construction specifications will address temporary conditions created from construction activities, so see application. So the findings of fact are that the findings of fact are presented by the applicant and an attached application, and that the conclusion of laws that the proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section six A for which the standard has been met.
So moved.
All those in favor? I opposed. Right, section six A. It's done, section six B. Be aligned here, and section six B is specific performance standards for activities and land uses in agriculture and hay. Air landing sites, Noel. And A, six B seven excavation. They top, African talks about that filling and excavation associated with proposed project erosion, sedimentation control. Specs are in exhibit three, so see application, six B eight fences and walls. African says that the a small retaining wall be will be constructed as part of the grading plans, no fencing is proposed. They do not have N A applicable standard map or applicable standard not that checked.
Missed it.
There you go. What do you want to check?
Applicable standard map.
There you go, see application. Kim, should he check that in the original one?
Yes.
Six B sixteen sign regulations, and A, there's no signs. Six B eighteen, you know, proposing self power. And my checklist jumps from six B sixteen to six B eighteen.
Oh, it makes it.
Yeah, and then we go on to six B nineteen, again, male husband read two, and A. Six B twenty mobile food vendors, and A. Let's be twenty one rooming house. And A, and six B twenty two hotels and motels, and A, so the findings of factor that the proposed use should include none of specific activities or land uses described in section six B except for six B seven and six B eight. And that the conclusion law is that section six B is not applicable except for section six B seven and six B eight for which the standard has been met.
Tracy Keller, so moved. Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. And section sixty shoreline zoning standards for review by the planning board, you guys are not in the shoreline. So section six A, section six C is N A. That the findings of factor that proposed law is entirely outside of shoreline zone, inclusion laws that section sixty is not applicable.
So moved.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. And section five nine doesn't apply because you're not in the shoreline zone. Are there any permit conditions on this one? None heard.
Are you waiting for easements?
Easements?
Yes.
Yeah, we're waiting to finalize the easements. The easement, yes.
That should be.
We can submit that with the full boot permanent application.
So what? Permit condition is the issuance of the revised utility easement?
Hello, can we just call up any revised easements?
Okay.
Confirming by rule for D E P.
Yep.
Two permit conditions. Got those, Heidi? Then we circle back to our E track player, press play. And all those in favor of approving the application with the two permit conditions?
I.
Opposed. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much for your time.
Right, item B under section four to note. We have another conditional use approval application. We have conditional use approval application. Oh, oh, two, twenty twenty four, named the Harbor Club. Agents Rob, Saint Armand, Atlantic Resources Co., LLC. Location is eleven Dodge Point Road, Seal Harbor, tax map three, lot twelve. Zone is shoreline residential two. Purpose is section three point four and six B seven excavation or pilling greater than a hundred and fifty cubic yards. And we're doing a shoreline stabilization project. We had a site inspection at four ten and was this one advertised?
Yes, it's here, it's in the same exact ad. Uh, the April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four, the Courier Gazette, the Elserson American Mount Desert Islander, the Republican Journal classified section page five.
How about a butter, Kim?
Yeah, some others were notified on April twenty fifth.
Fantastic. We had a site inspection for at four ten and and perhaps you could report your observations from the site inspection.
Well, there had been quite a bit of erosion over the years, and piping that got water into the pool was exposed. And it's above the title. High, high tide, high, I don't know.
It was wetter.
Seemed like a pretty good candidate for shoreline stabilization.
Yes.
I was actually surprised that there wasn't more erosion with the January storms we had.
You know, that was.
I was expecting to see, see it worse than it was. I've seen some real damage that we got this last winter, and it's it's a real wake up call for everybody who was on the ocean.
I wonder if the point there kind of pushed the bay back a little towards Long Pond or Little Long Pond. Yeah, I mean, it's it's a a low eroded shore, and there were some established Rosa Regosa and other little shrubby kind of things.
Hanging on.
Hang on.
More suspended.
Yeah.
You know, it looked like, you know, two to five feet was removed, but like I said, I still I'd say that you were lucky there wasn't a lot more. I guess it's a nice little location.
And I'll say too, we reviewed and approved the same application in twenty twenty two. Having said that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Saint Armand and explain why they're back here.
Thank you, Chair Handley, members of the planning board, Roger Saint Armand, I'm here representing the Harbor Club, and Teresa Merchant, his manager is also here as well. So, yeah, so we submitted this application, it was reviewed and approved by the planning board in October of twenty twenty two, and the the work was scheduled to happen, the fall of twenty three, before our twelve month window ran out, unfortunately. That did not happen, but our club was not able to to get a contractor there in time, things have been very busy. So we're requesting a reapproval or renewal of that original application. And I will say, I very deliberately submitted the original application that was approved in twenty twenty two to the planning board. I do have an updated site plan that shows the recent erosion from the storm. I have a full size one if the if the board would care to see that, or I have some smaller handouts as well, if you'd like to see.
Yeah, sure, it's definitely. Well, probably that is.
Pass out some of these. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I can give a brief description of the project that helps, please. So the the project is here for a conditional use approval for spill or excavation greater than a hundred and fifty cubic yards, as Chairman Handley mentioned, and we're we're going to propose a stabilization of the shore. It's approximately, it's a little over three hundred feet, about three hundred and twelve linear feet along the shore. It, the majority of that is currently is lawn that grates down into the beach. There were some stone steps that provided beach access, and there is some water piping that goes along the shore that that feeds the saltwater pool. And there's a the piping we saw today, there's a two inch pipe, and then there's also a drain from the pool that comes out next to the stairs, so all of that has been obviously damaged from the last storm, so this repair would certainly help protect that and prevent any more additional erosion. The proposed stabilization plan is going to be natural stone boulders that are going to blend in with the existing landscape. It'll be anywhere from three to four feet high on the lower side up to as high as six feet as you move north toward the existing pier that's there. And that's in line with the existing topography that's there. The upper part the upper part of the slope will be revegetated, it'll be a gentler slope, and then it will grate off and match the existing lawn. There will be some some shrubs and roses replanted along the shore to provide a little bit of a visual break there as well. So that's just the general description of the project. I would say the only change from the original application was we had estimated approximately five hundred and fifty cubic yards. Because of the additional erosion from this last storm, there's about a hundred cubic yards of additional material that would need to be brought in. It was some of that material that was getting excavated before. Mother Nature has sort of taken that away and removed it for us, but there is a little bit of more topside lawn that needs to get replaced now, so.
All right. I'll ask if there's any questions from the public. Not hearing any questions from the public. Right, and then Noel. Close public comments and get on with this. Thanks for explaining this, Roger, and like to think we're so nice, we're going to do it twice. So there we go. So I'll first ask if there's any conflict of interest on the boards.
No.
Right, and then let's first figure out if the application is complete.
It appears to be. Are we satisfied that all the documents from like the D E P and that sort of thing are current? There was some question about that. They're good for the requisite years to suffice for this permit as well.
I can address that.
Yeah.
Yep, so the the project is a D P Natural Resources Protection Act permit that was granted in, I believe, June of twenty twenty two. That permit is good for four years to get started, and then seven for completion, so we are within that timeframe.
All right, so any other questions about completeness?
My, the pen is still on the show.
I'll tap back.
No. I'm hoping we find the applications complete.
Thanks, Ellen.
On second thing.
Right, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed. All right. Oh, what would you guys think about using the check, the short form checklist again?
Think that would be wonderful.
I'm moving, we use a short form checklist.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed. All right, and then we have a motion to approve the application.
So moved. A second.
Press pause button, let's get into the review of the application. And you go, so I've got the application in front of me, got the short form checklist. The amended site plan, the original site plan. Let's let's do it. So section section six, standards for uses permits and approvals. We're in section six A, general performance standards compatibility. And physical size. They're gonna install stabiliz- in stabilization structures. There's. Alterations about thirty two hundred square feet of shoreline. Um, there's no impacts opposed to wetlands or areas below the highest annual tide. Visual impact. They talk about the stabilization when incorporate vegetation on the upper slopes. Replanting disturbed areas proximity to other structures. It's less than a quarter mile. And uh density of development is. So see application. Erosion and sedimentation control. So they have a um attached erosion and sedimentation control plan. It's the sheet one. If you can see it on the sheet one. So see application, highway safety, we say N A, it's. Shoreline stability invasion impact on on services, N A. Land suitability. Well, the proposed project is designed to stop active erosion. So see application, lighting outdoor, N A, there's none opposed. Six A seven stormwater. African talks about the coastline stabilization project. It's designed to allow stormwater drainage to filter down slope. While minimizing channelization and erosion. It's not altering existing stormwater drainage and refers us to the site plan, so. Six A seven stormwater is see application. Six A eight vegetation. Uh, project, the applicant says that the project will avoid and minimize any clearing of vegetation on the property. All cleared vegetation will be replanted according to its submitted revegetation. So. See application, six A nine dust fumes, vapors, odors and gases. We say N A. The findings of fact are that they are presented by the applicant in the attached application. And the conclusion laws that pose use is in compliance with all standards of section six A, which the standard has been met.
Some move. Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I opposed. All right, section six B, specific performance standards for activities and land uses. So agriculture, N A. Air landing sites, no. N A. Six B seven, why we're here, excavation. And. The African talks about that that excavation, the site will be required for project installation, grading and trenching. The anchor stones will take place within the shoreline zone. And there's no disturbance within coastal wetlands or blowed hat line. And they've got attached plans and details, so see application. Six B eight fences and walls. In A, there were none posed, sign regulations, N A. Six B eighteen wireless communication facilities, N A. Sixty nineteen animal husbandry to N A. Six B twenty mobile food vendors, N A, sixty twenty one rooming house, N A. Six B twenty two hotels and motels, N A. See the findings of fact that proposed use will include none of the specific activities and land uses prescribed in section six B. Except for section six B seven. And the conclusion laws that section six B is not applicable except for section six B seven, for which the standard has been met.
So move. Second.
Right, all those in favor? I opposed. You guys are in the shoreline zone, so we are going to look at section six C. So agriculture is N A, archaeological sites. The main historical preservation.
Nice job.
Yeah, was contacted regarding the proposed project response was received on March fourteenth, twenty twenty two. There's a letter attached and Roger, you said you reached out to them again to.
Yeah, Kim had had mentioned that um we may wanna get an updated letter, so we requested them. Requested another review essentially. Could certainly make that a condition. Where is historic structure? We would not expect any. Changes in two years, but again. Fine to just. Make that a condition.
So so see application. Uh, essential services, N A, parking areas, N A. Marine and freshwater structure performance standards, N A, building a year. Uh, section six nine, six C nine, N A, you know, no roads or driveways. And section six C eleven water quality. Uh, African talks about the project will improve water quality by reducing shoreline erosion. During and after the project, erosion control and best management practice will be utilized and minimize the transport of soils. And refers us to the site plan, so. See application, so the findings of fact about. Pros, proposed use will include none of the specific activities and land uses described in section sixty, except for. Six C two and six C eleven. In conclusion laws that section sixty is not applicable except for section sixty two and six C eleven, for which the standard has been met.
So move, second.
All those in favor? I opposed. All right, where we are in the shoreline zone, we do have to do section five nine. Right, here we go. Five nine one will maintain safe and healthful conditions. See application. Five nine two will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation of surface waters. See application. Five nine three will adequately adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater, N A. Five nine four will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird or other wildlife habitat. See application. Five nine five will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. See application. Five nine six. Will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comp plan. See application. Will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing or maritime activities in the shoreline commercial district. Not in the shoreline commercial district, N A. Five nine eight will avoid problems associated with the floodplain development. And A, not in that. The section five nine nine is in conformance with provisions to section six A, B and C. Which the standard has been met. Does the D E P. Permit cover? I've always wondered this, like, section five nine four about the adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish and wildlife.
Yes, it does.
Wildlife habitat.
Yep, when you submit a permit to the um Department of Environmental Protection. As part of their review, they send it out to their review agencies, which are. Inlet Fisheries and Wildlife and Department of Marine Resources, so they have to approve it for the D E P.
Got it. So the findings of fact are see above, and the conclusion was that all requirements for section five nine have been met.
Sorry.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed?
I think this document addresses a bunch of those. The D E P.
Yeah. Permit conditions. And H.
I've had made co-straits trust on the brain and saying. Said for the hospital the other day.
Was there anything else? And and they don't have to renew any other D E P permits because they're already in the window.
Yeah, yeah.
There, so. Let's circle back, press play, all those in. In favor of approving the application with the said permit condition.
I.
I opposed. Congratulations again, Roger.
Thank you very much.
I can see it again sometime.
All right. That was. Item four, let's move on to item five tonight. We have a subdivision approval application sketch plan. It's subdivision oh oh one, twenty twenty four, owners Alquory Granite Corporation. Agent is Barbara Williams and Margaret Jeffrey. Location is seventeen Shipwright Lane, Alquory, tax map nineteen. Lot. Oh, one oh dash oh oh two, zoning district is shoreline commercial. And purposes. Modifications were previously approved and recorded subdivision. Creation of a new lot amendment number one, the Fuhrer Corporation, file thirteen, number ninety four. We had a site visit today at four forty and was this advertised?
This was also advertised Thursday, April twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four. In the Courier Gazette, the Ellsworth American, the Mount Desert Islander, and the Republican Journal, uh classified section page five.
All right, and. Kim, correct me if I'm mistaken, but um with subdivision applications, they're essentially a three part application. And the first part of the subdivision application process is the sketch plan.
Correct, informal discussion between you and the applicants.
All right, so we don't officially have an application before us, we're just.
Discussion back and forth on a proposal.
So we're just generally talking about, you know, what this project may be. And I'll turn it over to the applicant. Oh, actually, first, let's um first report on our observations from the site visit today at four forty.
Okay, I will give this a try and you guys have to help me a little bit. So we drove down the driveway and we we discovered that uh what we were looking at was uh basically. The uh yard where there are lots of boats sitting um up and. There, there's an existing subdivision and they want to make a another division division of property. Uh, within that, um with a line running from the sh- shore on the far right hand side. Up in a diagonal, pretty steep angle. Uh, into the woods and up a up a cliff face. Uh, and we took a walk around there and had a look at the geography for some discussion about uh what the high water. Line was and exactly where the line ran and, you know, approximately where it was up on the cliff face there, so. Um, we just had a look around in the rain. And you all doing this?
And.
Cul-de-sac and easement.
Yes.
Across from my property, is that right?
We we talked about that, there'll be a.
Turnaround for the boats.
Yeah, we 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 can have the. Yeah, we can.
Here. Having trouble hearing because there are people talking.
No talking.
Sorry.
All right, so you, there was mention about the future cul-de-sac and having ample room to turn around emergency vehicles.
Um, and boats.
And and boats. Gail.
There was some discussion about how we didn't. The owners are not entirely clear of the boundaries of the precise configuration of the proposed lot. And that they were hoping to get some clarification of the board's intention. Before they contracted to do a survey, which is of considerable expense.
Alan. Nate, observations, nothing that hasn't already been mentioned.
Mm hmm. All right, now I'll turn it over to the applicant. Welcome.
Thank you, Margaret Jeffrey. Chairman. For making the time for us today.
Mm hmm.
Um, procedurally, uh we're here because uh the subdivision ordinance says that before we submit. The subdivision application, we should be here, so this is not actually uh pursuant to a subsequent uh. Subdivision application.
Mm hmm.
What we are proposing is to divide uh portion from. The law that's currently owned by. Oh. Over in Grand. Is the owner of record. It is a lot within a subdivision that was created in nineteen seventy four, which was well before the subdivision statute. The main substitute subdivision statute was adopted in nineteen eighty nine. And. Um, absurd ordinance was adopted in nineteen ninety. So it was. The old subdivision, the subdivision that that exists right now was not subjected to the same kind of review. That you are, that we will uh undergo through this process. So we're proposing, this is in um. Shoreland commercial zone, which requires that a one acre parcel be divided. Uh, excuse me, that it be a minimum of one acre. And um I have, I have a question about that in particular. Um, it's coming to our attention that we. Would want to look at section five point nine.
Of the subdivision.
Land not suitable for development.
Which said the board shall not approve such portions of any post subdivision that are located within a hundred year. Frequency floodplain.
Is that a question?
Well, the question is, uh, how does that impact our? Configuration?
I mean. Well, I think. You know, just. The top of my head, that's kind of what the survey is for, and nature would determine um. You know, a surveyor is gonna overlay what that. With the floodplain elevation line is on the on the configuration of proposed law and. Um, determine where the buildable area is, if there is any, you know, and that's. I think that's a. Probably a key first thing the board would probably look at. Is making sure that the property is is buildable. Because.
Okay. So a portion of the one acre would have to be. Outside of.
Yeah.
The one acre floodplain.
Yeah.
Excuse me, that a hundred year.
Yes, yeah.
Of the one acre. Has to be outside.
Yeah, and I think it would be, and guys jumped in here too, um, I think it would be prudent to, you know, have kind of a proposed. Lot configuration, you know, so that, you know, if, you know, we observed today that there were kind of some lefts and rights and. Backs and force to the. backs and force to the to the flags and proposed pin locations and, you know, as, you know, lines jump around like that, and then you've got the constraint of the the floodplain elevation, you know, that that's probably going to impact your buildable area, so getting this, the board getting a sense of what the lot is and the potential buildable area, I think is key for us to make a determination.
I think in that regard, don't we also have in terms of defining lot requirements, we can't include in that if there's, we don't know where the normal high watermark is. And we can't include in any lot size. For the purposes of meeting the one acre provision, we can't include it, include anything that might. It all has to be above.
Yeah. The and a surveyor will also include that line, the headline by a standing on tide line on the survey. So you'll have, those are two key. Key lines and then. Yeah, and then you have your setback from that, the seventy five feet, so, you know. Again, making sure you're you know, you've got a conforming buildable footprint there.
Does the the seventy five foot setback? That's for any structures, but it doesn't take away from the acre of uplands. That you need. I'm calling upland like out of the.
Yeah.
Your floodplain.
I don't believe so, and that's a code enforcement question.
So you're asking the land within seventy five feet is counted towards your lot, as long as it's not the floodplain. Right, so you're, I think what you're saying is we need an acre above the.
We need an acre of dry land.
Okay, and that seventy five feet is 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 a buffer, but just for a building or a structure or stuff like that. That's it. From a hundred year flooding.
Yeah, from the highest annual tide.
Yeah.
Highest annual tide, not a hundred year flooding.
No.
Okay.
Also, and this will be strictly commercially used. That you're applying for.
But we're applying to divide the lot. Inside all the.
And I I guess that's.
A lot, you said one acre. Shoreline Commercial does allow one acre as long as the primary residential use of the shoreline commercial district is commercial. If it's residential, you're going to need the adjacent residential district zoning.
Okay.
Which means two or three acres, I can't remember the zone up above it.
The abate, it it's R one is above it.
No. You can't have R one if you're in the shoreline zone, it's got to be shoreline zone. So the adjacent shorelands residential zone.
Oh, and there won't be any, oh.
The other is, I'll be past, like Mike Uzetti's lot, I believe, is in shoreline residential two, which is adjacent to that lot. And it would mean you would need two acres if you're going to use it as residential use.
My house is not.
Okay, well, I, the way that I saw the the zoning map was this lot will be surrounded by shoreline commercial on both sides. And residential one above, but you can't have shoreline, if you have a lot in the shoreline zone that fronts over water, it needs to be in the shoreline zone, two hundred fifty feet. So you need the shoreline residential, the adjacent shoreline residential zoning, residential district. Which would be two acres. I just, I just, I I don't understand it because. And I I I can talk to you about this further, but where is the, where's, where, what portion are you reading from?
I'm reading from footnote G. That's on shoreline general commercials dimensional requirements.
Other than.
This is a district commercial, that is one acre.
Shoreline Commercial with residential. Residential dwelling, one and two family.
Footnote G. Primary residential use in a.
Footnote G or footnote.
Sure.
A primary residential use in this shoreline commercial district must meet the dimensional requirements of the adjacent residential district. This requirement does not apply to projects that include permanent cell but qualified workforce housing.
I don't, I I just don't see why that restricts us to the adjacent shoreline zone, shoreline zone that has residential uses. It says that it primary residential use in shoreline commercial district shall meet the dimensional requirements of the adjacent residential district, which is R one.
But you're in shoreline residential, the lot is within two hundred and fifty feet, you can't create a lot without shoreline zoning within two hundred and fifty.
Why, why does it defer to R two if not, I'm sorry if I missed that. Not our.
It's got to go by the short, the adjacent.
What's on the shore.
Huh? Because it's in the shoreline zone, the whole lot.
And and the R one lot is more than two hundred and fifty feet back, and so it's not in the shoreline zone.
But they can know, the problem is that there's no adjacent.
The adjacent is telling you the one from either side of the lot.
And the the one behind it doesn't qualify.
It's a residential two, it's outside the shoreline, it has no show.
Yeah. So then you have to look to, okay, what's, what's the next adjacent zone within the two hundred and fifty? With. Story.
Um, storage field representing the buyer. If the lot was two or more acres, then could it have, it could be commercial and have a residential component, does that solve that?
Well, then is it right, are they both two principal uses?
Hmm, I don't see, again. We're trying to figure a lot out, and so I don't think, I don't think it would be primary residential. So it'd be commercial, and it might even be workforce residential, if that's. But.
Anyway.
That was just mentioned, it would be. Well, that's a qualified workforce housing entity, and that's a very specific. Well, it would be housing for an employee. Yeah, whether whether is a qualified workforce housing entity in that context, I'm not sure, that I think that's a specific term of law.
Well, in shoreline commercial, looking at the.
Three six.
Yeah, page three six, the line you sort of as you know. Residential dwelling, one family and residential two family dwelling is allowed. Residential dwelling multifamily is not. Accessory residential dwelling. Looks like it is. Accessory structures. Including structural additions and guest houses is allowed. Cluster and workforce subdivisions are not allowed. Residential storage building shed is allowed and didn't sound like you were going to put a mobile home park down there, and that's not allowed.
Well. Would if there's already an existing, albeit rough dwelling on the on the property.
And that's strictly residential use right then, that's the primary use of that area, that piece of land, that's what you're saying. But right now it's all one big lot, so it's a boatyard, that's the primary use of that property.
Well. What I'm saying is.
So you're saying you want to cut out. You're talking about cutting out the one acre and there's a rock building on there now that chooses a dwelling in it?
I'm just saying it's that, well, there's an existing dwelling.
Yeah.
It's rough. If we have a two acre lot and we build a storage unit and building unit commerce, oh, it's be private. Can we resurrect the existing residential structure that's there?
So we are creating two principal uses on the property. Then you have to meet the zoning counts too.
You had a question, sir?
Yeah, Ira Khan, representing buyer, just, can you please, first of all, thank God for coming on the train today. I didn't, I didn't expect that and wasn't very comfortable. To clarify, we said what was allowed, the A D U was allowed within that zone.
Yeah, it's on table three six. We look back to it.
Section three.
Yeah, so we have residential one and two family residential dwelling unit, multifamilies are not allowed. And however, accessory residential dwelling unit is allowed in shoreline commercial under on page three six of the landy's ordinance.
So so would that allow being, we could have a single primary use and have a dwelling unit as a fellow the storage building.
That's an interesting question, so if you're. Are you asking that if there's a prime, the primary structure or there is related to a shoreline commercial use that you could have an accessory dwelling unit relative to it, but it being a residential use? And and Kim, isn't that what you were just saying about the that we would have to meet then the nearest adjacent district requirements?
But it's accessory. The primary use would be the boat, I mean, whatever they're both, I have no idea what they're all there.
But. But can you have?
The primary use would be whatever they're applying for, if it's a commercial boatyard, that would be the primary use.
But you can be an accessory to a primary use, even though it's technically not the same use. Is. Yeah, so if I'm following your question right, so if the primary structure there or primary uses is shoreline commercial use, you can have another use permissible use be accessory to that like residential, it doesn't have to be an accessory shoreline commercial use.
Well, dwelling units are allowed, the shoreline commercial, it's not.
Yeah.
But the condition used on it from the plan, what? He's got to see that.
Yes, maybe what I'm. Can a residence be, I would assume the the shoreline commercial use would be more commercially focused, so you can have a residence accessory to a commercial structure? Yeah, it it sounds like you can.
Well, principal structure we use is a structure we use other than one, which is wholly incidental or accessory to another structure or use on the same lot. So you could say, you know, I I get size, but also what are to.
The size. The seventy five percent ratio.
Well, that's what we have for accessory dwelling units. But we changed it now.
With the change, do you no longer have to have the double dimension for them that they're.
In the shoreline zone, you have to, that is a change.
Still have to.
You want us to change it. That's our guidelines. Now, this isn't going to help, because this is an only family. So it doesn't apply to shoreline.
Just to make it a little simpler, the intent is to have a two acre lot.
You mean.
Is a private storage boat building. And I'm talking about a small lot to burn, it will facilitate air boats that are within that.
Within that same structure?
It is, it is possible.
Yeah.
That's that the period of my question, really.
But Kim, that's a different.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry, I was looking. For you.
Explain, explain that again.
Um. Private boat storage building, you would have a lot to burn, modest for housing for people who are working on a boat that are within that building.
That was that's technically the A D U then, if it's.
So we're into two acres. It's in.
Well, we don't know involved, it's just a cliffside.
Yeah, well, we don't know yet, but it's probably down at the end and that extends in Woodson.
This one here. Through that patch of trees. I'm not sure, I think that's going to be presented in the board.
Um, I'd have to think about it, I can't give that right now.
It it is not a lot, not so, it's done with the lot where the building. Better planning.
I mean, say that again, please.
It wouldn't necessarily stop. The property that not allow them. But it's, it would be helpful to manage it, if it is.
Yeah.
One of the aspects of this was, and I got lost because in part I couldn't read the maps that was provided, but are there any like right of way issues or road width issues, because it's going to meet subdivision road requirement some, because I understand that, which is fifty feet. Um, sorry. Sorry?
Well, the existing road going to the lot is forty feet wide. And so we would have to ask for a variance from that, because the required subdivision lot road width is fifty feet wide, so once you get on to the lot that's being divided, we'll make the right of way fifty feet wide, but we will ask for variance as you go over the forty foot wide existing easement on other people's land.
I mean, with. I mean.
And that's not going through the boatyard, I couldn't.
Does.
It does, that's what you're talking about, okay, okay.
And yeah, it's, it's really hard to read, but, you know, just. I mean, if lot, if the lot A configuration is around one point seven acres, I mean, you're not that far off, I mean.
What's the right away with from Alquory of?
Forty. Going down over Stone's property and the other property on the other side of it to the boatyard.
Yes.
Right, right, ship, the one.
I have a large subdivision surveying area, do you mind, would that be my fault?
Yeah, my, my old eyes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, even with my reading, this is on Margaret.
The thing that.
Obsessed, this is the boatyard. This is the forty foot wide existing right of way going down to it. This just shows, I guess, the surveyor at the time in nineteen seventy four showed this road going down, it's this portion right here that we're talking about dividing off. Yeah, that's, that has to be figured out too, there probably. But this is an active footprint map. That's, that's.
I mean, it sounds promising if you have two, two acres, um, but even with the two acres, again, gosh, I would think the very first due diligence you'd wanna do is delineate what that floodplain elevation overlay is, um.
And my question is, if residential is not an issue, then only one acre would be, would be important, is that right?
Yeah, if you, my understanding from what Kim understood, explained was that a, yeah, if you don't have the residential components, then you're looking at a minimum one acre sizing. It, it would seem like if you were aiming at the two acre threshold, I mean, you'd just manipulate the line to the, to the south some. And, but fair warning, I mean, again, back to the blood elevation, you might have to give yourself a little more if the, you don't have the buildable area with, if it really overlaps there.
Bill, we are targeting a two acre, that's the target.
Thanks, yeah.
That's, that's a feeling full.
No, that's a, that's a surveying exercise.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, um, and the other a- aspect of the road I just wanna bring up is that, um, there is a, what we think is a prescriptive easement accessing this lot over here. It is not something that we have on paper, but we are taking it into account, it's a property that's owned by Mike Lozetti who's here, and that is his access to his property.
Is that the only way you get down there, Mike?
We presume you'd like to continue to do that? You can have a helicopter and a fleet, yeah?
Thank you.
Clear as mud.
I know, yes, um, but I, I, I really appreciate some of your comments because they have been helpful for my understanding, specifically of the interpretation of five point nine.
Yeah.
So thank you, um.
I mean, you could get a basic boundary survey and have them do the setback and floodplain exercise over that. You know, you don't have to like dig all the deeds up until, you know, way back when, I mean, that's, uh, again, that's, that's essentially a ge- geometry exercise.
And I should say, um, it, it was commented that, uh, there was question as to the boundary line between Mike Lozetti's property and the boatyard, that's only that I don't know where it is on the face of the they know where it is, they are very aware, yeah, I just don't know.
Yeah, I mean, they've got line descriptions on there.
Uh-huh, I think there are even pins and.
Yeah.
But there's an iron pen there and that old stones bound.
An old maple.
Yeah.
Eighteen ninety-one.
Did we provide the information you were seeking? Yeah.
It's very nice to have this, too.
Yeah, I mean, you look at these old hand drawn plans. Yeah.
Love that.
Yeah, I love them.
Well, we'll, um, see to having large sites like that, kind of.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And did I, did I hear that Ken might research a little more about the idea if you wanted to put, if you wanna put apartment and the boat storage facility?
Yeah, but what's the, what's the last size you're striving for, you said, two acres?
Well, that, that, that's not, the, the property owner, that's not necessarily what the property owner is striving for. We're, you know, that's.
Well, like you said, if it's primary residential use.
I hear you.
In a shoreline and commercial.
Good luck.
Are we good?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's, it's a big goal, there's a, in parts, yeah.
Ken, I've, I've got a question under other. So on, on the twenty-second, we're, we're, we're approving, on the twenty-second, we're doing, we're doing our findings of fact.
Yep.
approval or acceptance, I should say, um, what happens if I'm not there for that?
You have to be there, we need those signs.
I have to.
You have to all three of you to do that, those need to sign, because they're ready to set room, I think, we're here, I have a special meeting, Sam.
And we have to pick up the meeting minute.
Basically, wasn't here at twenty-four, so we couldn't sign a man, so, and you're supposed to hold it on there.
Yeah.
So you need to have it signed.
We have to sign them at the hearing.
Yes.
It's too late to have a special hearing before then. It's too late to have a special hearing before, like.
I didn't have enough time to publicize it, and we could have had it any sooner than the twenty-second.
I guess what I'm asking, though, if it's like a, just a pro forma acceptance of the findings and the signing of the of, of them, um, does that a- actually need to be a hearing, or could we just, it does?
You've got the attorneys coming.
Okay.
Everybody said they would be there.
All right. I'll be late for the Guatemala presentation.
I sit down, I'm leaving and go in the car.
Yeah. Any, any other, other?
Uh, just with, with the loser stuff, there's nothing, just, I would have your report, there's nothing to say because we haven't met yet.
Yeah.
So that will happen, I did wanna say we had a, I thought we had a good discussion last time, and as, I hope that we have more lots of different ideas, and if I personally go back to lose, the loser committee, when we start talking about things like six A, whatever it is, um, my goal would be not to say so and so said such and such, my goal would be to say these are some of the ideas that were expressed that some people felt were important, and, because they're all ideas, no matter where they come from, and they're all gonna have to be processed and thought about when we're talking about any changes, so unless you have any concerns about that, that, that would be my approach. I'm not betetized to say so and so said this or that about this topic, um, it's the ideas that, that I think are, are important. So, I just wanna clarify that that is definitely the, uh, approach, I mean.
Roger that. All right.
Move to your turn.
Okay. All right, any discussion?
Kim, these are yours.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?